Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
If we're ready at this time, I'd like to call to order the Human Services Committee. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian? Commissioner Heideman?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner O'Reilly? Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greitath?
Here.
Will please stand for the question.
I plead to the citizens of the United States of America, and to be held up for what we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
I would move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? This time, do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on to updates.
Just a quick one. Carl is at a meeting. He sits on the Board of Port Huron Hospital tonight, and they had an important meeting that he had to be at at 6:00 o'clock, so they said, "Go there and take the day off without pay." So deduct his check, would you?
It's like the government shut down, don't get paid.
Do you need a motion on that? Anyways, any other updates? Seeing none, we'll move on to conceptual initiatives. Okay, if we don't have any, move on to old business. If we have no old business, we'll move to new business. 7A, Department of Human Services Board, reappointment?
I'll make a motion that we send on to the full board. I believe the name is Barbara, is it Hankey? I think that's correct.
Okay.
I would second that.
Any discussion?
All in favor? Move down to the full board?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passed. This time, do we have any other human services matters? Seeing none, we'll go to information only. 9A, may I have a motion to receive the information only?
Move to receive the information only item?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passed.
Motion to receive and file all packets?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passed. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passed.
I'd like to call to order the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary Public Safety Committee. Would the clerk take the rule, please?
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian? Commissioner Heideman?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner O'Reilly? Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greitath?
Here.
Any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Move we accept it as presented?
Motion.
Guys, for lack of a second.
I was writing some notes here.
I will second.
Now I have two seconds.
Oh.
All right. Never mind.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Citizens, any citizens wishing to address the Judiciary Public Safety Committee? Are you none? Updates? Chairman Bone?
Yeah, I have an update here. Going to give you a little of the history piece of it, too, where I guess we're at today. Roughly two years ago, this is regarding the state police, actually, roughly two years ago, they were closing the post out in Richmond. And at that time, the county, along with the city, and some other individuals had reached out to offer space to house the state police. The two areas that were chosen at the time were the airport and city building over here. I think the city building roughly has six full-time state troopers along with a polygraph person, and we had seven to eight individuals that were housed out at the airport. Probably, hmm, it's no more than July or August, somewhere in there. Mayor Rep actually contacted myself along with Bruce and Mike Reeves, and we talked about the possibilities of moving all the state troopers from the airport and housing them down at the city building over here. Talked to the rest of the commissioners about it, did we have any issues with it, so on and so forth. I think everybody thought it was a good idea to be able to house the state police at the city building. Increased police presence, you know, with Port Huron, I think if you look at some of the call volumes at Port Huron, you know, tend to have a higher call volume and some of those types of things, so having them located there, I think we all thought made quite a bit of sense. They are going to be out of our airport on October 6th, and they are going to be then operating out of the City of Port Huron building. I'm not sure if they're in the fourth floor or one of them over there, they have some space. They're going to have 13 state troopers along with the polygraph operator will be housed out of there. So just a little update, then that does free up a little bit of space out at our airport with some of the additional office space. I think with Jeff Friedland going to be moving some of the hazmat stuff out of the building, a good, you know, probably at least three-quarters of it. There's a couple of things that we may have to, that need to be in heated storage, we're not sure yet if we're going to be able to move that out or keep that there, but then that opens up additional space for some of the airplane stuff. Brad, I know Kathy's going to get the numbers, our fuel sales are through the roof out there, doing real well. A lot of customers that we haven't seen, so it's good, and I don't think it's, you know, as we look to invest in the airport at future dates, I think Brad will help do this, and I talked to him the other day, if there's some things at the county, then we'll need to do out at the airport to make it a better airport for, you know, attracting people, so be it. So just kind of a little update on state police moving out and opening some of the space out there.
When's that effective, Joe?
The state police thing? October, October 6th. And I got, you know, I give, you know, I give them a lot of credit because the city was, you know, when they, when Pauline first called me, they were worried about, you know, the politics piece of it, you know, "Do you guys, are you guys worried that if the state police move to, you know, over the city building is, you know, we don't want to do anything to disrupt, you know, the relationship between the city and county?" And really, at the time, it was, we were just trying to make space available to keep the state police.
We wanted to keep them in the county. We didn't make improvements out there that cost the county some money.
Put an office in, you know, $5,000.
Part that bothered me is, you know, for the short term.
Yeah.
But if it's continually marketable, then the condition it is, I mean...
But that additional office space now will lend itself to the whole airport operation piece, so it wasn't like we spent oodles amount of money to get them in there. We did keep them, and now, you know, having them, I think, located in the City of Port Huron, you know, I mean, the city went through a couple of years ago where they were trying to, you know, hire three or four officers, that was a priority and budget constraint, so on and so forth, and, you know, don't want to say the state police are going to become an arm of the City of Port Huron, but the increased police presence, you know, in the city, I think, is a good thing. I talked with Chief Reeves about it, they've already assisted in some different things, so...
Could we put a locker room out there, Bill? Was that one of the issues?
Yes, we put a...
Put them in a room, put them in a, put them in an office that was already existing.
Know what it was.
And then stuck up...
It was one of the initial things that was an issue, was they would men's in women's locker room and that kind of thing.
But they were already two existing offices that were there that we put them in there, so it wasn't like we had to build them out, lockers and all that other stuff. Not a huge investment, but now we're going to have, you know, talking with Brad, some of the demand that some of the corporate stuff has is, "Okay, I got my plane located out there, but it'd be nice to have a little office area that the guy can come in and do his thing beforehand," and so, so I think that'll lend itself to...
How long did the state police occupy that, Joe?
Probably a year, you know, I was at, we just had that airport deal this past weekend, I didn't attend, but I was at the one the last year before that, and they had been in there no more than six months prior to that. Actually, Mr. Marsh is here, you guys had... About 18 months.
Some benefit out of it, then?
Yeah, well, we kept the state, we kept them located in St. Clair County, you know, and that was at the time when, you know, they were looking, they weren't sure where they were going, and so, that's the next chapter.
I attended the Sunday morning breakfast out at the airport and really impressed with what the friends of the airport have done out there. They've spent a lot of money renovating the building that used to be the old terminal building there, and I think they spent over $60,000 on that building that they're renting from us for a dollar. And I also talked to Sergeant Nesvet of the state police, and he mentioned that they would be moving to the municipal office center, and that for their, from their standpoint, having everyone at one location makes a little more sense. So I think it's a good move for the City of Port Huron, certainly a good move for the state police.
Any other updates? Seeing none, conceptual initiatives, none, no old business. Moving on to new business, 7A, fiscal year 2013 Emergency Management Program Grant Agreement in the amount of $41,381. There is no local match here, and these funds will pay about 38% of the director's salary and fringe benefits. Something we do every year.
I move we send this to the full board for final action.
Second.
Motion and support. Any comments, questions? Do we need a roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7B, fiscal year 2014 Community Corrections Contract. I spoke with Jerry Selmer regarding these contracts, both of them coming up, both B and C. Numbers have not changed, all figures are exactly as they have been in the past couple of years.
I move we send this to the full board for final action.
Second.
Motion and support. Any further questions, commissioners?
This is going to be for the substance abuse treatment that they performed for us?
Yes.
No, this is the Community Corrections Grant.
You want ahead, Ali.
How did I miss that? Okay, just to be sure. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor sending it on to the full board?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to 7C, fiscal year 2014 RSAT contract. This is with Catholic Social Services. Again, these numbers have not changed, they did not go up or did they go down? Same contract that we've had.
Motion.
I have a motion.
Support.
And a support. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fiscal year 2014 Day Reporting Supervision Contract. That is 7D.
Second.
Motion and support, any...
And this one is for Huron House, and it's correct, and I believe it's... $10 per diem?
Yes. Correct.
I think that's the same as it was last year, right?
It is. Those numbers did not change. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last one is 7E Motorola Maintenance Agreement for CDA radio consoles.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a support. Any discussion or questions? All in favor of sending this on to the full board?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other judiciary and public safety matters to come before this committee? Information only, we have a Public Safety Communications Interoperability Board reappointment, that would be Jeff Friedland. I sent him a note telling him it was an honor for him to do it, to represent us, and that was it, so I've got that information only piece.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just point out that this was a letter from the governor?
Absolutely.
Rick Snyder appointing our Jeffrey Friedland to this position.
And that's his real signature on that letter?
Yep.
Very good. All right, we need to receive and file that information only?
I would so move.
Support. Moved in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, gentlemen, it's up to you now. Receive and file.
Move, receive and file.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Adjourned. Sir?
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian? Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner O'Reilly? Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greitath?
Here.
Commissioner Heideman?
Here.
Are there any addition, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samasco. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Agenda is approved. Any citizens to be heard regarding environmental or public works matters? Any updates from commissioners? Any conceptual initiatives from administration? Any old business? Moving to new business, the Kimball Township easement at the landfill. Do you have any comments on that, Administrator?
Sure. First of all, the landfill manager, Mr. Williams, did work very closely with Corporation Council on drafting this, in conjunction with Kimball Township as well, and their council. Basically, what's happening here is Kimball Township needs to put a structure in the, on the county's property out at Smith Creek. That structure will allow them to complete the construction installation of a sewer line from the village, or the unincorporated village of Smith Creek, to a sewer line that will eventually find its way to the City of Port Huron's wastewater treatment plant. This is a requirement of Kimball Township through the DNR because of some environmental issues and failing septic systems within that area of Smith Creek. They do need this in order to complete that forced main, so this would give them easement or access to our property.
Do we need a motion then to approve the easement agreement? Okay, I would entertain that motion.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bone?
Court.
Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Greitath. Just a comment, it's interesting to see the people in the village of Smith Creek moving on this with the failed septic systems. When I look at what's going on at Kimball Township, and, you know, our clean water is so precious that we really need to protect our waterways.
Yeah, I was actually just out at Kimball at a meeting, I think this whole project's roughly 1.8 million, 1.5, someone, somewhere in there, and my understanding, they received about a million dollar grant on it. This thing's been like four or five years now, I mean, it's, this is, we've been working on this for a while, so...
It's a good thing. Commissioner?
We do have counsel here just on the agreement, I'm not sure you need it approved, but the easement area halfway through it said, "Parent parcel common with the South Rightaway lineup between Grand Trunk Railroad. Please, the legal term for Grand Trunk is no longer Grand Trunk, it's the end of North America." I don't need correction in the...
You sure about that? I believe so.
We do have some with some inside knowledge. Okay, no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And counsel will definitely look into that. Any other environmental public works matters? Seeing none. Information only, the park and rec financial documents, I would entertain a motion to receive and file the park and recreation financial documents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. Motion to receive and file?
Move, receive and file.
You have a second from Commissioner Greitath. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
Support, adjourn.
And we are adjourned.
This time, I'd like to bring the order, the Ways and Means Committee. Have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian? Commissioner Heideman?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
We have a revised agenda.
I would make a motion that, under 2A, that the, we cancel the 10-10-13 budget workshop, and we take the airport asphalt repair and move it down to 7C under new business.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passed.
Move to accept the amended agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passed. Do we have any citizens wishing to be heard for the Ways and Means Committee? Seeing none, we'll move up to updates. Do we have any updates? Seeing none, we're going to move on to conceptual initiatives. 5A, road improvements. Little bit on this, and this has to do with the Goodells County Park. There's three roads, and we have a proposal here, and I believe you all received them in your emails, in regards to the three roads. We have a cost analysis that I asked Kurt Westen, I got involved with this about a month and a half ago, to give us a cost estimate on all three roads. Goodells Road, total cost, current width of the road is 18 feet, and it's going to have a two-foot wide extension. Total cost for their improvement of that road is $122,600. County Park Drive, cost estimate, it's 19-foot wide, it's proposed for a two-foot wide shoulder, and the grand total on that one will be $185,008. Castor Road, the third one, it's 20-foot wide and a proposed two-foot wide shoulder, that total cost will be $103,399. Total cost for all three roads will be $411,007. Per Kurt's letter to us, the Goodells Road is a primary road, and the road commission will be funding the full cost, the proposed project of $122,600. That will leave a balance of $288,407. By law, the St. Clair County Road Commission will have to have a minimum 50% participation by others. Wales Township had their full board meeting on Tuesday night, and their board has agreed to fund $30,000 of the project, which would leave a balance of $158,407, and that's adding the $100,000 that the road commission would commit to. And we're looking to get that for out of the park, millage fund that they have. We do have a corporate counsel, legal representation that said that this is within the boundaries of the millage, that it can be used for these easements and egresses and in and out of the parks, so we already have a legal opinion on that. What I'm looking to do, is you got all the figures, is to move this on to the board on the 17th for final action. There's the short rundown on it.
What... Want to put them up there?
Yeah, if you have any park members that want to come speak on the issue?
Whose conceptual initiative is this?
David's.
Yes, David?
What was the amount that Park and Rec would have to commit to this from their millage?
$158,407.
Jim Beer, Chairman, County Park Finance Committee. This was just brought to our attention at our monthly meeting this past Tuesday, it's first that our committee had become aware of it. We did have a chance to discuss it without all the information in front of us, we didn't have any of the financial breakdown in front of us at that time. Mark's been able to obtain that and share that with us over the last day. This is certainly an improvement that we'd love to see in County Park Road, the use of the funds through Park Millage. I guess our reaction is, you know, we would love to have been asked to look at this and respond back to county board of commissioners after a chance to review it and discuss it ourselves, and have not been given that opportunity if there's no urgency. I'd suggest that we pass this on a month and let this go through a regular park cycle, and it may, or may not come back with the recommendation from us to do exactly what you're suggesting tonight, but I'd appreciate the opportunity to discuss it in depth with our members before we proceed.
Good question. This proposal, how would that affect if it was not done the way you're asking? How would that affect how your finances roll out and your park plans and so forth? I mean...
I really haven't had time to evaluate where it fits in our budget plans for next year. Actually, that's really the concern. You know, it, I don't dislike the idea, but that's my personal opinion, speaking as one right now, and not as the finance committee or as park as a group, and I think that, again, if there were urgency here and the county commissioners felt the need to act immediately, fine, if not, I think in spirit of cooperation with our group and yours, that I'd prefer to see it done the other way, and let us come back with comments to you in another month.
I think a 30-day, I'm sorry, I'm jumping in.
Yeah, Howard. I was just out there not too long ago, but as I look at what you're proposing here, Commissioner Rushing, it looks like, at least from Park and Rec Millage, if we're willing to commit $158,400, we will get $411,000 of work done on all of the roads out there.
Correct.
And County Park Road, it is really bad, and... And so, I look at this and I'm very supportive of it. I know it's a departure from the way that we've been handling Park and Rec Millage in that we haven't spent it on county roads. That's very unusual. However, we do have roads going through some of the other parks that are probably as long as County Park Road. And what did you say the cost was for County Park Road?
I believe Goodles Road is $122,600. County Park Road is $185,080.
And so, I have not personally drove the roads out there. Need to take a little road trip. I mean, are they, are they all in bad shape, all of them that surround the park?
Pretty bad, they're pretty beat up.
Are they pretty beat up, yeah?
The old bridge there on the main road coming in is narrow. I take stock trailers across it and it's...
And it's probably safe to say those roads, are they traveled, you know, are 80 percent of the travel that comes through there via to go to the park systems, is it a 5 percent deal? I mean, is it, I mean, the one that cuts, the one in my mind that splits the two in half that you drive through, that's why you're going down that road to get to, you know...
There's six residences and a church, you know, so...
The park, yeah.
County Park Road, one concern that we have, and I don't know whether it will be addressed or there's any way to address it, it's deteriorated to the point where its road condition limits the speed. But one thing that we did discuss on Tuesday recently, there was a citation for speeding at 70 miles per hour on that road. So as the road gets improved, you know, it will be a lot easier to go much faster. Is that a good thing or a bad thing? And that's at least some of the pros and cons that we'd like to explore and discussion a little bit further. Also, the issue that we brought up was, you know, the responsibility for improvement of Castor Road at the expense of County Park Millage. We could certainly see, County Park Road makes sense, but does Castor Road fit? I think, again, our opportunity to discuss it, come back either with, concur with the funding, or to make comment back to you and let you proceed on your pleasure, I'd certainly appreciate the opportunity to do that. And there may be some additional benefit that comes out before the project is set in place.
Which ones? County Park Road cuts through the park?
Yes, sir.
Castor Road?
North, south, on the east side.
North, south, on the east side. That would, that one would run into Pine River nature strike?
Yes.
Okay, and then the other ones?
Goodles Road beyond the west side. Which that one is what the Road Commission considers the primary road for the county, and that's completely the county's responsibility.
If you're going to get to the park, you're going to come off a pier, you're going to come down Castor, or you're going to come down Goodles.
Goodles, yeah.
And coming from the expressway, you're going to come up Morris Road into Goodles, down Goodles Road, or back around through spiraling over to Goodles Road and over the expressway and down. They're not really long. There's what, three miles, mile ahead, two miles on Goodles Road, and I don't know what the dimensions are, but there's not a lot of road surface there. From spiraling to...
I have three quick questions here. One, Commissioner Rushing, the two-foot shoulders that you're talking about, will those be paved shoulders?
I believe so, and you have the proposal from Kurt Weston to verify that at home. I believe it is to expand.
Second question is, if we were to delay this at Park's request for one month, what would that do to what you were thinking?
Well, talking with Kurt Weston, meeting with the Road Commission, and they need a plan for next year, and he said that worst-case scenario, by November. But the sooner the better. And I appreciate that, definitely. There wouldn't be a holdup from Park. I mean, if you have any hiccups, then we could address that and maybe table it for one month. But if you're all on board, I think this is a big plus for everybody in the county. And the sooner we get everybody on board, I think it's a good thing, so. Once your board meets, and you can come back and have Mark do with this, or Howard come back to us and say, "We have a concern, let's table it and get some more information."
This doesn't have to be done, you're not going to plan on doing the physical part of it this year?
No, it has to be in 2014. Part of their road planning, St. Clair County Road Commission, would not do any work until 2014.
My third question goes to Jim over here. It looks like County Park Road is $185,000, but they're asking $158,000 from Parks and Recs. And you made a comment about you didn't think Parks and Rec should support Castor Road. I'm confused on the numbers here somewhere. What have I missed?
Well, you're including Castor in the total cost. If you take Castor Road, that's $103,399.
Right.
And then you also take County Park, that's $185,008, which means out of the $411,700 total project, there's a balance of $288,407 above and beyond Goodles Road. With Wales putting in $30,000, that would leave, and the Road Commission putting another $100,000, which is already part of their annual budget, that leaves the balance of $158,407.
Okay, but what I'm seeing here then is that for $158,000, County Park Road gets done to the tune of $185,000. Correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, but the total value is over $400,000.
Correct.
Total value is over $400,000?
Yes. Yeah, it's 411, I've got that number, but they're getting, County Park Road, which is $185,000, road done for $158,000.
Right. And that runs right through the park.
Basically leveraging that $100,000 commitment from the Road Commission. That's what you're seeing.
And $30,000.
And $30,000 from the township.
Would it make sense, Dave, to do this if we directed administration to have a resolution ready for full board next month? Resolution supporting this conceptual initiative, and then refer it to Park to report back on implementation issues? That way, you know, if there's support for that next month, have it for full board to pass a resolution supporting it, and then direct, tonight, direct Park to report back on implementation. I mean, I think that would be a, if there's support for that conceptual...
When I went to the Road Commission meeting, sooner the better, but no later than November.
Well, once you, but if you had your resolution adopted at full board, is that the green light necessary to get everything moving? And then Parks could take 30 days to report back on implementation issues and...
It could work. Our next meeting, our next Finance Committee meeting is the first Wednesday in November, and then our full Park meeting would be the week, the week after that, is that right?
I think what I'm suggesting is if they, if we have, if the conceptual initiative is adopted, so to speak, and you're directed to implement it, would that work? Would that give you time to report back on implementation and raise any issues on timing or fund availability or anything like, would that make sense to do it that way?
I like that. Anything to add, guys? I like, I like, it certainly gives us the opportunity to share the actual financial breakdown, which we have not seen as a group, and review that. And I, for one, definitely appreciate that opportunity.
Well, for the $411,000, if there's any reason not to do it, I'd definitely like to have that. But I think this is a big plus for countywide, big plus for the park. It's going to give you better access and exit and entrance into the parks. It's a plus for everybody involved. And they have a three-way partnership in the county. They're all Wales County Board and the St. Clair County Road Commission and the Park Board, anybody that's on board, and I think it's a big plus for the county. If we don't do this, I can't see this project happening someplace in the future where we can improve this amount of roads for $411,000 total cost.
We've got board support, Dave, we're just trying to figure out a way to...
Give them 30 days, let them go hash it back around their deal, and they can come back and talk to us about it, I mean, it's...
Okay, then this time, if there's any other discussion?
Do we have a motion at this time?
It's just conceptual initiative.
I mean, I would move to have a resolution ready for next month, for full, for the next full board meeting, but not in the resolution.
October 17th. October 17th, not November, right?
October 17th. Have the resolution prepared, you know, I table it, but at least I think Dave wants to move it along.
Jim, are you not beating...
I would second that motion.
Finance meets the first Wednesday, and then Park meets the following week on Thursday?
But you're talking in November?
November.
So my motion was to have the resolution prepared and ready for full board. We can adopt it or table it. Howard seconded it, and that'll give you some movement on it.
For the next regular board meeting?
Right, for October 17th.
October 17th.
Is part of your motion also to have...
That doesn't need, that's just a, that's something they can do, that's...
But then, I'll also note in the committee reports that the last Park and Recreation Commission that you held, it was proven unanimously, let's see, it was motioned by Matthews, supported by Lalonde, that Park advocated for improvements to the roads around Goodles County Park, and the motion carried unanimously, so whoever's at the meeting at that, the initial discussion.
So the motivation's there.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll move on. Do we have any old business?
Jim, hang out for a second. We can do this at our next meeting, but we don't have an alternative for your position, correct, Jim?
That's correct.
Threes Hawkins, St. Clair County, or St. Clair Parks and Rec person. I would like to just, be quite, yeah, be quite honest, I forgot, he told me about it, I forgot to do it, so maybe at the next meeting, we could put that on as...
For final action?
Yeah, for final action, if anybody...
Just as your alternate?
As an alternate, yeah. Because his other alternate resigned. He sent me the information, and I dropped the ball on him.
What's her name?
Threes Hawkins. She's, she's the Parks and Rec Director for the City of St. Clair. Very knowledgeable.
Good choice. Do we have any? Okay, we'll move on. There is no other old business. We'll move on to new business. 7A. This is the elevator maintenance and testing with Tyson Crump Elevator. It's a cost of $12,960. I would entertain a motion to forward this to the full board?
So moved.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, we're moving on to 7B. 2013 Budget Adjustments Number Two. We have some adjustments there that the contingency, let's see, post changes increase the general fund from $57,316 to $289, to $58,787,629, and the contingency will decrease from $208,674 to $192,883. Do we have a motion to send this to the full board?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. We'll move on to 7C. The airport asphalt repair, and this is going to be for final action. Ron, can you give us a breakdown on it, please?
Good evening. Kind of on the heels of the board's discussion about airport improvements, Mr. Kaufman had asked that I take a look at the existing asphalt that meets between 295 Airport Drive, which is the new EOC building, and 275 Airport Drive, which is the FBO building. Efforts to try and make some improvements there. And we solicited a bid, and the first one came in higher than we had hoped, so we had to go out and collect two more competitive price bids, and you should see a tabulation of those three. And due to the nature of this work, we need to move very quickly, so we would recommend that we would award a contract to the low bid with a 10 percent contingency. And we would like final action if we could.
Final action.
If we could.
This is for final action. Do I have a motion?
I would so move for final action.
I have a second. Support? Any discussion?
Ron, last time I was out there and followed a rain, and the property, as you're looking at the, when you're standing between the two buildings, you're looking at the FBO building to the left of that, when you go through that gate right there, right behind it?
Where the fuel cells are?
Yeah, that, that whole area was under water for quite a period of time. Is that the area that we're talking about?
Yes, it does encompass that area, and what we hope to do is reshape the water to shield towards the fuel farm into the green space there. So we're going to make some provisions for that.
That will clean that area up then?
Yes.
That was pretty rough.
Yes, you should have an aerial right there that, on that sheet by your thumb, Commissioner Graytop, that should show the area in question.
And I'm looking at about a dollar a square foot?
Exactly, a dollar a square foot.
16,700 feet, $16,700.
Exactly. Funding for this will come out of the Maintenance Public Improvement Fund.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need a roll call on that?
Well, that's final action, roll call, please.
Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
What's the amount on there that needs to be stated, too?
$16,700, but I guess the total cost could potentially be $18,300 with the 10 percent contingency added.
So was that a not-to-exceed number, or what did we do with that?
Is that correct, Ron?
Correct, not to exceed. Usually, projects like this, we try and throw a 10 percent.
Just wanted to cook to have it.
Thank you.
So it is not to exceed $18,300.
All right, we'll move on to 8. Do we have any other Ways and Means Matters at this time?
Sarah, cancellation of the budget workshop was, is that added or deleted?
That was added.
Did we do that one?
We did move that to, we moved that to 7D.
I didn't have it crossed off, I don't know if I missed it or...
No, we haven't done that one yet.
I would so move that we cancel the October 10th budget workshop.
Have a second?
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. And now we'll move on to other Ways and Means Matters. Do we have any? Seeing none, we'll move on to 9. Information only. We have two items, the City of Port Huron Notice of Public Hearing for the Brit Manufacturing, and also the City of Marysville Notice of Public Hearing in regard to the SMR Automotive System and Michigan Foam fabrication. Can I have a motion filed with us?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, number 10, can I have a motion to receive the filed package?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
Mr. Chair, I move that we move into executive session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations and adjourn following the collective bargaining negotiations.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
We are adjourned.